Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electronic devices off or to vibrate at this time. Mr. Bob McDaniel, will you please lead us in our prayer or play this evening, sir?
Heavenly Father, Paul in Galatians admonishes us to live in the fruit of the Spirit. Through the Spirit says things like kindness and goodness, patience, just doing good things. So we pray that so many of those things will integrate in our decisions tonight and every night, Heavenly Father. Give us wisdom, decide in the way you want us to decide for the good of our children. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands on, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And sir? All right, until approval of the minutes of the April 16, 2018 meeting, we all have time to read it up. And we are short tonight. There are two council members that will not be here tonight due to Kedos functions. So Baronions first, we're going to be just the three of us. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Um, papers say aye. Thank you. All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Does anyone here not on the agenda want to speak? Nobody jumping up and down? Anybody can get it? All right, moving on. City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on request from Chad McDuffie to approve the plans for the annual Justin Miler 5K run event. Mr. Deputy, make your end. Is he busy with the future?
Uh, no. He has to do the same route.
Should he be back?
We should invite him.
And that's the one where we're trying to stay out of the state highway?
Yes.
Okay. But I have a motion to accept Chad McDuffie's, uh, request for the annual Justin Miler 5K run. Should move. Do I have a second? If they approve, all in papers say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on presentation for Mr. Bob Foreman with MP2 Energy. Mr. Bob?
Actually, I'm with priority power management.
Okay.
MP2 Energy.
Hey, Mr. Chad. We just did you, bud. I'm sorry. You wasn't here. I apologize. Hey, are you going to stay with the same route? We were expecting you to stay with the same route.
The same one as last year.
Okay.
It seemed to work out very well. It's out of the way of everything, all major traffic and everything like that.
Okay.
So we're planning on sticking with that.
Okay, that's why I asked you. And we thought it would be the same since it was less trouble and less state involvement?
Absolutely.
Should you go with that? You're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's what we just agreed upon and we just accepted it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Sorry you came in, but I didn't know if you were coming.
We're setting up for the, uh, sports banquet, so.
Okay. I'm sorry, bud.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening, sir. All right, I'm sorry about that.
We're actually a third-party energy management consulting firm. We've been working with Ballenger for many, many years. Been working with Bonita all during that time, almost 2010, I think, was the start, many years ago. I brought some information on priority power management. Your current retail supplier is MP2 Energy and that contract reaches term in June and it's at about 5.6 cents. And then we'll talk about what the future looks like for you. Probably a little bit of information here on us, it's stuff that's printed out. I won't bore you with reading everything, but just a little bit about PPM. We manage over a billion in energy spend each year and, uh, serve over 1,400 clients out there in the marketplace. We also work in all the regulated markets in the U.S. Little bit there. Anybody have, uh, my presentation is meant to be interactive, so if anybody has a question, please, uh, please interrupt me or stop me. I want to really thank you for all the past years that we've worked with Ballenger. We have enjoyed it and we really appreciate your business. And thank you tonight for letting me come before you present, uh, some possibilities in the marketplace for you. If you'll turn to slide five. These are some of the notable governmental clients we have and manage. Abilene, many, many of the sites of Ballenger, but we also do City Abilene, City Midland, City of Dallas, City Arlington, several majors as well. That's just tonight to hit there. Back to turn to page. The next is just some notable commercial, industrial, institutional clients in the area that you might recognize, up and down the streets of Abilene, Dillon, Odessa, Bixbury, anywhere you might be. Our process, slide seven. Where we are in the process, right here is a revolving process. PPM believes in long-term relationships and we, uh, work hard to make sure that our clients don't have to do anything related to electric energy. We kind of serve as a dotted line between you and the market, all the market participants. And in this case, we've been going through this process of portfolio management and contract management for the last several years. And now we're back into step three procurement for the future. So it's just a circular process that we utilize. We specialize, as obvious by, uh, our oil and gas load. PPM serves about a third of the major 100 oil and gas producers, operators, midstream, long haul in the ERCOT market. So we're used to dealing with a whole lot of accounts. They're called PSIPs or electric service identification numbers. And these are some of the services that we provide. Summary level billing, ads, deletes, issue resolution. Bonita and I have been through several of these through years. In fact, I just drove over the Hutchins Bridge. That's a beautiful project y'all did and we did the, we did the add-on lights. Also, no congestion's a big deal out in West Texas because of the explosion we got out in the Permian Basin with oil and gas load and the demand on our systems. Our wire sizes are a little bit small out there. They're beating them up, but no congestion out there creates no congestion here. It's the whole west zone that we're looking at. So the pricing we're looking at today has a no congestion hedge in it. Any questions so far? That's enough on us. We can give you a little market advisory. This is last slide 10 before we get to the good stuff. It shows the trend of the market looking through calendar year pricing at any, at any point in time. And if you look, we've been on a downward trend since, oh, uh, really right at the end of '14 when it took a big drop, started a downward trend on pricing. You guys are not at the exact absolute bottom here, but you're extremely close. If you'll look at what's happening in 2018 with all these price spikes, you see them out there? The big, big numbers or the big curves jumping? Y'all, y'all are fortunately hedged through 18, so you don't have to worry about this. But what that is, is we've had a recent announcement of four major baseload coal-fired plants in Texas. Well, that's a big deal because it reduces Texas's, uh, power margin below the threshold of 12%. So they're, they're, they're looking at that at all times. And the summer of 18 is supposed to be hot and it's supposed to be volatile. So there's a really good chance we'll set new peaks, but all of 18 is going to be volatile and all of 18 is really expensive power. You do not have to worry.
What about those coal-fired plants? Make sure that works.
They're all inside the ERCOT grid, sir. I absolutely don't know exactly where they're located. Most of them are owned by Luminet or the former old TXU Energy Company, Texas Utilities. Y'all may have heard of them. Most of them are owned by them. All four of them are owned by them.
You don't have to be out there what kind of load you're going to produce.
There, there, it's about 4,000 megawatts. It's about 1,000 megawatts of plant on average, maybe actually a little more than that. They're big baseload plants, but they're so inefficient and so, I mean, these plants were built in the 50s, 60s, maybe early '70s. And they're just having to go to higher efficiency plants because the market pricing you're fixing to look at will not support old, inefficient power plant. Now, I'm a former old WCU employee and, uh, of course, we had a big presence here for a lot of years. We, uh, when, when deregulation occurred, actually just before, they retired all of their natural gas plants. They were all old, inefficient and couldn't be supported by this tomorrow. We're talking about, uh, power prices, really 20-year loads, right now maybe a 15-year load. That's what you're getting to look at here today. So the next page is really where we're looking. The pricing that we did is based on Thursday, uh, close of business. So the market changes every hour of the day. So anything you're looking at, these are not executable prices, but anything you want to execute on, it's still going to be very, very close. You have a pending contract that will start in June with Reliant Energy at .04427 per kilowatt hour. .04427. So you're fixing to fall from 5.653 to .04427. That's going to be a, that's going to, you'll really notice that in your budgets, really noticing. And what I'm proposing here in front of you on this pricing analysis is a term of 12 months through 48 out of June 2021. So we're looking at showing you the market conditions for seven years. The three that you have a contract plus potentially up to four more, four more years after that. So right now you're at .04427, excuse me. In a month or a little over a month, you'll be at .04427 per kilowatt hour for your energy. And that's to the trade and that does not have no congestion hedge in it. And so this comparative analysis is looking out four years beyond that. So you would, if you, if, if I had a contract here and we executed today, the city of Ballenger would be protected through 2025, through mid-2025. Any questions on what we're looking at here? Well, the market out that far is really soft. It's extremely low. And what you're looking at, if you'll look at the orange by Turner right here in this, in this table, those are the low prices you're looking at and the relative supplier just beside it. For a 12-month term, Mid-American is low. For all the remaining terms, TXU Energy is low. Now, your, your current, your, your pending suppliers, Reliant Energy, y'all never experienced Reliant, but I will tell you this, both suppliers are excellent. Either one of them, well, Reliant is going to do you a great job and, and either one would do you a great job in the future. We're unbiased about that. Many, many times, uh, suppliers are selected and they're not necessarily the lowest-priced supplier. Mid-American's money comes from Warren Buffett. That's a Berkshire Hathaway company. And TXU's money now is almost basically, they're almost standalone. Because Luminet, Encore is sold, that's a wires company, and Luminet, let's call something else now, forget the name of it. It is also in the process of sale. So if you look down, all these numbers, there's tons of numbers. Look at the gala highlighted numbers. You would be able to project if you selected a four-year term, a $54,000 reduced energy spend over that term of time. And the pending contract you're getting into now, y'all are at about 1,300 megawatt hours and it's going to drop about 10. So you're probably looking at 12,000 or 13,000 a year. You're probably looking at 36 to 40 reduced spend, 36,000 to 40,000 reduced energy spend over the next three years. Plus then if you selected a four-year term, another, what was it? I don't know. And I'll, I'll tell you this, many of our cities are going out into 2020, many of our clients are going out into 2024, '25, '26, '27. I have one client who ran into 2028, 28. And it's just because these market conditions are just creating a great buy opportunity. Now, that's my formal remarks and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure if y'all had this decision on the agenda item or, or not. If you look, hold on, one more thing though. If you look at the very next page, it does a straight line comparison for all the retail suppliers that we did. We did six retail suppliers here. Okay? So each table, 12 months, 24, 36, and 48, everybody see that? That's ordered, low-priced supplier to the highest. So you can see how they view the market, the differentials that can occur between suppliers. Y'all see that? Just to take the 48 for example, the low to high, uh, differential is 34 to 37, three tenths of a pin. That's how tight the market is. They're, they're looking at the market pretty much the same across the board. Now, I threw a whole lot of information out there, y'all. If you got a question, I'm happy to answer. I've been in this business about 35, 38 years. So watching the deregulated world evolve has been a very interesting thing to do.
Can you come answer questions?
I call this four-year month. Don't forget savings for 53, 991 over four-year period?
Over four-year time period. Yes, sir.
Another $14,000 a month.
Yes, sir. 14 a year, a year.
Yeah, I said it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
He said my thing changed.
I corrected.
I wish, I wish I knew what it was. No, really, I don't, because then you would be paying so much. Right now, it'd be, it'd be nice.
So under this proposal, we can lock in our past three years for now, basically?
Yes, actually a little, a little over that.
How can you do that?
Old markets, it's a commodity. Markets are made that far and we, we, what happens is the supplier makes trades on the spot. So in this trade, if, like, if you booked this today, it could be traded out and hedged by tomorrow or the next day. They have to market. If you can't, if it doesn't work, you put this out there and sell it and hope that the real-time market will take care of it. That would kill them. So they're actually, when they book a deal like this, they buy natural gas for that term, they buy heat rate with power plant for that term, and in many cases, they buy parts of their ancillary services or the other market components that are out there. And in your case, uh, they're marking themselves, they're hedging themselves, you know, the just, the retail suppliers. It's pretty common actually right now to, to be selling out in 19, 20, '21 for start dates. I know it looks like a long, it really, it happened so fast. We believe, we can't promise, we believe the market can't support itself because love has got to give up. Our producers run, metal run, running on these, on these low market conditions. Can't promise that. Wish I could sit here and promise if you wanted to.
Reiterate what you were talking about going out for 2025.
This one's for 2025. Are you talking about the one to 2020? That's 48 months. And then there's a pending contract with Reliant Energy that Ballenger has already executed, that's sitting there waiting for you right now. It'll, it'll, it'll come into life, it'll roll into.
That was, that was the secret word, not the question.
Okay. It'll affect a few hours later.
I might look at that screen. I think it's good to have budget consistency for seven years, sir. It's good rates. I did, I did nothing and stuff, and I don't, I mean, we all have, we've talked this bottom down a year of that and it's done lower. Nice to improve on lower, but, uh, every, we've had a ground for four years, about 34, 36, 34.
A year ago, um, like in April, we hit a low point in '16 and we hit a late point in '18 and we both pretty near 20-year loads. We have sold some $31, $32 power. But each customer is different, you know, just by your load shape, uh, your oil and gas, the big flat load, everybody that's running 24 hours a day, seven days a week, they're, they're going to be a lot lower price than the city of Ballenger. It's not good.
Counsel, I'd like to look at our current plan to see if we, if there's any way to get out of that. Just before I can sue, could I look at that?
Yeah, absolutely.
We were not involved with Reliant Energy contract.
No, we didn't. Can't, didn't.
But I will say this, we're, I've already spoken to Randy and Bonita about that. Priority Power will continue to support Ballenger exactly the same way we have throughout that three-year term without compensation. Do you all know how we're compensated, third parties? In most cases, 99% of the time, it's a volume metric embedded fee. So we are paid for every kilowatt hour that we use. And we're paid over time through the contracts, so it's just a little bit at a time. So if you book something way out in the future, we're unpaid until a point in time when, when energy is global. So the retail supplier actually pays us. But they are charging that fee which is embedded into the cost of energy.
So your fee is included in these, right?
Yes, yes. Y'all have no more questions?
Do you need some motion? Anything?
Well, yeah, just maybe, but I would just pay with this right now, kind of, anyway, like, you don't get that contract, then we'll get back on this.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Um, papers say aye?
Aye. Randy, I was talking to you, so we can stay in touch.
Appreciate you, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
We appreciate it, y'all.
Appreciate your time.
We'll let you escape if you'd like.
Right, right back down to the lab, when you said, "Have Mary." Y'all have a good night.
You too, sir.
All right, City Council may consider, discuss, or take action on an application to open La Poya Game Room at One Rennett North 8th Street. You should have that request printed on a packet.
I think that's actually south.
Bottom building, right? Yeah, should be, should be south. Okay, it should be south. You are correct because it does have one, two. Thank you very much.
Send the notification and everybody convicted of the felony, same as left line.
Okay. And I'm going to, Pat, did you have any comment on this as far as moving forward with it?
Well, I think that's a good part there, that's an employee application.
Okay.
I'll leave your table at this until we have further discussion and look at our arguments. My argument specifically says this has to be defeated.
Correct. I agree with both of you. You were saying that they were here?
Yeah.
As far as?
Yes.
Who is who? Y'all?
I'm Christopher Lee.
Okay.
Do I stand in front of them?
You can stand there. You don't have to, whatever, your voice is carried.
All right, thank you.
Y'all have questions for him or?
What about the Christopher? Everybody convicted of the felony?
No, sir. No convictions, no charges.
How do you found these machines work and what kind of machines are you talking about to install?
They'll be, uh, video supersized and they'll just be, uh, computer games on a actual computer rather than bringing machines in.
What do you win if you win?
Uh, we give out a patch and then we'll have a charity that we donate to as well.
And what is that charity?
The Boys and Girls Club of San Angelo. And I've given the information to Mrs. Shields earlier as far as their idea. earlier, as far as their idea.
So this building directly across from the post office, correct?
That's correct.
We also have the one that's down there on Seventh Street, the opposite corner, law department. You leash it or bind?
Please.
Well, I still approve the, the, this until our full council is available to discuss this further.
Do you agree?
I'm sorry, what, what, my joke, see, we're getting a lot of folks from San Angelo getting to come here. What's the deal?
Uh, well, it was okay in San Angelo, we were open there for about five years, and I guess a change in, I guess it was the chief or the city council, I'm not sure exactly where it stood, but they ended up closing it down, and we found that the area was, for a minute or minute, so we thought we could.
Seems like a little town to me, the sanctuary.
We don't mean to be such, we always had a clean environment and a wonderful place for our people to be, it's just been hard finding places that allow.
So would you file for mixed beverages for me?
No. No alcohol at all.
Would you do B Y O B or?
No. No alcohol at all.
Really?
I don't think any of these places can have alcohol in them.
I'm not fully sure, because there was places that used to have it inside as bars, but as far as a fee, like as far as charity sweepstakes, I'm not aware of that. I've never heard one have alcohol.
I do not know.
And Stan, I also agree with the tone of Jason's letter. I'd like to second that push.
Okay. So I need a motion to table this. Okay, a second. All in favor, say aye. Christopher, the only thing is that we have a short council tonight, and some of them wanted to make sure that they were here, so therefore that's what we're doing, to table it in order for us to be able to review it and discuss it as a whole.
Understood.
Okay, so we don't have repercussions from not discussing as a whole.
Okay.
Is that understood? Thank you, sir. All right, moving forward, have considered approval of building permits, you should have a couple in your package.
Daniel, I commended, an hour one, twelve street, we're putting in a twelve-by-twenty-four, seven-foot story building, and Saturday Hiller, two oh six tenth, a ten-by-twenty-two-by-eight-foot story building, and Don Pointe, two oh seven, eleven feet, a twelve-by-fifteen, seven-foot shed.
No issues, Steve?
No, we don't have any, I mean, we're gonna find that length, we're totally.
If you're ready, Stan, I'd like to make a motion through the.
Go ahead. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, thank you all. Thank you, sir. All right, here's the police activity monthly report from Chief Stanley Marash, please.
For the month of April, fifteen arrests, thirteen accidents, three hundred and twenty-seven calls for service, eighty-four citations issued, and almost seventy-five hundred dollars in court fines. We are doing a lot of highway interdiction, and we're getting a lot of dubs coming from probably us. I don't know if everybody's seen pictures on Facebook, but highway interdiction, we have three highways coming through town, and we've been doing that, and it's turned out a little bit. Other than that, that's pretty much it. I do like to meet Pete Bunker, he's one of our newest officers, actually, he's been with the department since two thousand and twelve, two thousand and twelve, he's been in a reserve, and we just hired him full-time, and he should be starting off his FTO this Tuesday, and go on the night shifts Friday night, so just like we all even, say hi.
Welcome, Pete.
Welcome to the company, everybody. Anybody else have anything?
Who do you, your place?
We had a lot of work here.
All right.
All right, here's the city minister's bi-weekly report, please.
The state department is getting real busy on their preparing streets for paving this time. They started today up on Country Club, zipping two blocks of Country Club up that will be paving. I don't know how far they got this afternoon, I didn't get to stop by there, but they were pretty well, had it tore up and going back to dirt streets. Down at the swimming pool, we've replaced all media in the swimming pool filters, that media has not been replaced since the swimming pool was renovated fifteen years ago, around how long ago it was? It was in pretty sad shape, so, you know, we have new media in the swimming pool, this is a new, new media, it's not sand, it's a little different than a sand media, lasts a lot longer, you take your plants, and keeps the water coming, so we're going to put it down there.
My understanding is we went back to Ziolite? And I can, I've had a lot of experience with Ziolite, working in gas plants, came in the waters and stuff, and it is very good media, lasts a long time, and it's very easy to backwater, refurbish, and get ready to build next, so I think that's made a good move here.
Current lake levels were seven tenths of a foot below normal, they're in good shape going into summer. At the treatment plant, last week, we just finished cleaning all of the backwash basins. Normally, we do those about every three months, it's been about six months since they were cleaned over, they're kind of good to go out there. Other than that, everything's running along about normal, no problems.
You have questions for service?
So Randy, do you have any proposed street plans for paving, I mean, or, or two, I mean, considering the Atlas is tearing up things?
Yeah, we're trying to, we've delayed a lot of street paving because of Atlas, because we don't know when Atlas is going to get to certain areas of town. We know one area down on Second Street, that's in really bad shape, and Atlas plans on crossing Second Street in several locations, so we kind of hope upon that area. Up on Country Club, we're gonna do that paving, our main reason for doing that is we put new water lines in a couple of months ago, and PSD to get it completed. Atlas is gonna do some replacing up there, but it's right against the curve, so we may get lucky, they won't tear it when they get to there, but we're trying to, we're trying to get them to work with us to where they would go ahead and replace what they needed to replace, but we're kind of going back and forth on that, they don't want to jump from one place to the next. If you know, they're still in South Valenger, they've been out there for quite a while. They had to pull off for about a month, six weeks, they ended up, big problem in Dallas where those houses blew up, and they had to pull all the crews off here and send to Dallas to work on that, so that delays them, so.
And you're still good at the vacancy work, man?
Yes, we're still taking applications till the end of this month. We have one newbie that'll start next Monday, there's a trainee, but we're still looking for a licensed operator, so far, we haven't known the oil figures pretty much.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're trying to get right on.
Who are you confirmed with at that most?
If you hadn't asked me that.
Kip. Ken?
Kip.
Kip.
Kip's the one.
I know Kip very well.
He's in charge of all that.
I know Kip very well.
And then Ken Fisher, who worked for Atlas, he's, he's trying to get him to kind of work with us. They, they will probably be here in the next five to seven years to replace and run.
All right, that it? Thank you, sir. All right, here are requests for future agenda items from city councils, anything else we need to get on the agenda, please? All righty. As the agenda is, as far as the following executive sessions, I'm gonna change those up a little bit, we're gonna start on the water first, on Agenda fourteen, so Bounder City Council should be in the executive sessions authorized by Texas Government Code, Section five five one dot zero seven, consultation with the attorney, discuss and consider updating on alternative water project. Thanks, y'all, have a good evening, appreciate you coming in.
Action for my executive decision is legal counsel will work on modifying some of the code for the trucking. And also come up with a citation ordinance for the code enforcement. Is that correct? All right. So we're gonna motion that, right? Now motion accept him doing so for the ordinance. Second, on my favor say aye. All right.